Good evening, everyone. This is the Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. I'm Shannon Rutherford. We will start with a roll call of our commission members. Robert Canto.
Here.
Peter Zarella.
Here.
David St. John.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Michael Costa.
Here.
Okay, I will note for the record that Scott Halsted and Mike Tucci are absent this evening. I will also note for the record that we are functioning as a five-member commission because we have a vacancy. So.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Liz Sanford. I am going to be acting as chair this evening. Welcome to the November 12th, 2025 Plan and Zoning Meeting. First off, let's start with, oh, Mr. Polsky, will you be a voting member today?
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dave, could you read the legal notice?
Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on November 12th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. William Clark, application for a special permit and site plan approval for the construction of a 22 by 30, 660 square foot two-car detached garage with a 355 square foot loft in accordance with Article 4, Section 30, expanded home at 14 Mountain Road in an R20 zone. And Stanislav Lipinski, application for a special permit approval for 18 chickens and a nine-by-five chicken coop at 1055 New Britton Avenue in an R20 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 119th Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via a link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. The copy of this proposal can also be found online at the website or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-3235, dated at Farmington, Connecticut on this 23rd day of October, 2025.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so let's start off with new business. Cumberland Permit Strategy Group.
Okay, let's see if somebody is online. Has anyone called in online for a sign application for 65 Spring Lane? Raise your hand using Zoom. I'm not seeing anyone that's called in at the moment. We can table and go revisit that later in the meeting to see if anyone has called in. In the meantime.
Okay. So we'll come back around to that one. Next item is Farmington Sports Arena.
Okay, I see Sal. Sal, is that Sal D. Tomaso's iPad? Sal, are you presenting? There's Jake. You should be able to, Jake, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Okay, I think I did.
Okay, are you, if you could introduce yourself and then present the request for the scoreboard for the sports arena, please.
Okay, Jake Lyman with Fair Play Scoreboards and Lyman Signs. Just looking to install a scoreboard at Farmington Sports Arena as per the plan submitted. Been discussed with Sal and the location shown right there. I don't know, do you have copies of the other plans as well that show it?
I do.
Okay. That's it right there.
Is there anything else you want to share with the commission regarding this at this time?
Um, I don't have anything else. Is there any questions?
We will start that now.
Okay.
Okay, Peter, let's start with you. Do you have any questions?
What are the approximate hours that the scoreboard is operated?
That'd be a question for Sal.
Sal, you should be able to unmute your microphone so you can participate in.
Close out.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So the power will come up the base leg of the sign. Right now it's underground. Once we excavate, we'll go ahead and bring a stub up from that. So there's power already in the ground.
Okay, the question that, the question had to do, I believe, with the hours of operation of the scoreboard?
Yeah, how late into the evening might the scoreboard be operated?
Well, we'll stay within our constraints that we have. Generally, the 10 o'clock is when we shut everything off. But this is really more for kind of special events. Farmington High School Soccer or Lacrosse will hold events here depending on the weather and depending on the schedule. So it's not really going to be used often, but for these special occasions, you know, we had the the US Men's National Team and the German National Soccer Teams here. And so we would use it for events like that. Again, it's infrequently.
Okay, thank you. Is there any sound system that's part of the scoreboard or is it just illumination?
But Jake, I think there's a buzzer there, right? A horn for.
Yeah. Correct, there's just a horn for end of period or that's usually all it's used for.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you. Bobby?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, is this replacing an existing scoreboard or is this a new?
This is, this is a new application.
And do we have something, Shannon, I see we said something about confirming those sound systems associated with the scoreboard. Is there, is there any kind of regulation around that?
No, I think they just indicated they're just, so there's no, no, correct, there's no announcements can be made from, from this. And anyway, it's just the horn to end the quarters or halves.
Correct.
All right, no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, Bruce?
Just out of curiosity, how is it controlled? Is it a custom device and is it wireless or is it?
There's a wireless controller, battery-operated wireless controller that's used for it.
And that'll normally be kept in the office and only brought out when it's in use.
Correct.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, no further questions.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, online, any, any questions?
No, they were asked and answered. It's really only going to be used when they have the big lights on anyway, right?
Yeah, pretty much. Again, special events, we have that one field is more for little higher level games. We have women's programs there that we play. We have a, like a semi-pro, but a non-pro team playing occasionally. We'll have Hartford Athletic will bring the team down, so.
No, I get it. My kids have played there.
Yeah.
Okay. My only, my only question is, are there any other scoreboards outdoors currently?
No.
Okay, so this would be the first one.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's my questions. Anything else come up? Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess is it just, is it visible from other places that are nearby?
Um, not, not really. I mean, it's, it'll, really, when you come down the gravel drive and you'll see the backside of the, of the sign. But everything's really visible from the fields, that particular field there. So midline of sight from the other field might be just too far away. But it's really kind of confined to that one field there.
But there's no houses or anything that would interfere with you, bother?
No.
By a distance, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and anything else come up? Okay. Are we feel ready to, prepared to vote?
Yeah.
I need a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan review for Farmington Sports Arena for the installation of a new scoreboard at existing field on 11 Executor Drive, CR Zone. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I said aye, too. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll go on to accept our application and then swing back around to see if that sounds good. Okay. Okay, Mark Orgazie, we have a, accept an application. Can I have a motion to accept?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit and site plan review by Mark Orgazie with waivers for the construction of a 9,000 square foot contractor storage building at 1533 New Britton Avenue, CR Zone, with a recommended hearing date of Monday, December 8, 2025. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's accepted. Thank you. Now, let's see. Cumberland Permit Strategy Group.
If anyone has signed in, logged on for Cumberland Permit Strategy for the sign at 65 Spring Lane, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom so you can present to the commission. Nope. Well, and I just checked my emails in case somebody had emailed or called. I don't have any emails, so.
This is the first, this is the first time this has happened.
Yeah, we'll just let it, let it sit. We can come back to it at the end. And if we need to, we can just continue it to the next meeting if we need to.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Couple of things, glad everyone has showed up. And the public hearings will proceed with the applicant making a presentation. Then the commissioners will ask questions and then we'll open the public comment, both in person and online. And just when you come up to make a comment, please give your name and address and keep your comments to about five minutes. Just, we're all here and it's a late night, so we don't need to, we all want to move judiciously with our time. And if your feelings or your comments echo those of a previous commenter, you can just say, I agree with whoever. And we're all volunteers here and we all want to make sure that we, everyone gets a chance to be heard. Okay, so our first public hearing is William Clark. And this one, I will say we are going to open and then we need to continue it. So let's, so we just make a motion to open the hearing?
Open the hearing and then it's just really.
I will open.
To continue, to continue to December 8.
Okay, so I am officially opening the public hearing, but we need to get a motion to continue the hearing until December 8.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for William Clark's special permit and site plan review of construction of a 22 by 30, 660 square foot two-car detached garage with a 355 square foot loft in accordance with Article 4, Section 30, expanded home at 14 Mountain Road, R20 zone, continued until Monday, December 8, 2025. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion's passed. We visit that in December. Okay, our next presentation or next public hearing is Stanislav, Stanislav Lipinski. If Stanislav, you're in the building or if you're in the room, come on up and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to apply.
Thank you.
Here to apply for the special permit for the 18 chickens. Thank you.
Okay.
I like them.
Anything, anything else you'd like to share with us about the location?
The location is going to be in the backyard and everything is enclosed. And like the show was a letter that somebody has some concerns about the food and the wild animals. So the food is stored in a separate closed container. The water is delivered every couple of days and the chickens are enclosed. We don't let them out. And I don't know where else to add.
Okay. Well, thank you. You can, why don't you stay right there because commissioners will get a chance to ask questions. Okay, Peter?
Um. So do you currently keep the chickens in the fenced area next to the coop?
Yes.
At all times?
Yeah.
And how many chickens do you currently have?
18.
Thank you. And there's no male chickens at the property?
No.
How long have you had the chickens at the property?
We have the chickens for a while. I just was not aware that we need a permit. So I was informed with the letter from planning, from Garrett. I got in touch with him to get this result.
And approximately, how far away from the sides and rear of the property is the chicken coop?
It's gonna, right now it's kind of, it's gonna be 10 feet from the right, right corner and probably like five feet from the red line from the back line.
And on that right side of the property, is there any fence or screening?
No, there is no fence. There's some, there's some woods, but no fence.
Um. Have you had any conversations with your neighbors concerning the chicken coop?
No.
Um, I don't have any further questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bobby?
Um, just to elaborate on what he said, you haven't had conversations or they haven't had any negative or? Nobody's approached you about it? Okay. How long have you had the chickens for? You said a while, but what's a while? A year, two years, six months?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years, okay. All right, so they've been there a while. How are you storing the food and stuff like that?
The food is like in a metal, metal container. You gotta open the container to grab the food. You put the food inside the coop.
Okay, right. All right. Have you had any issues with bears and wildlife getting into it or anything like that?
Not so far, no.
No, okay. And what are we doing with the manure, if you will? How are you?
Couple weeks, I dispose it in a plastic bag and garbage. And some of it, I'm keeping it, turning over with the, with the soil of the garden.
Okay, and are these, are these egg-laying chickens or are they?
They're egg-laying chickens.
Meat chickens or?
Egg-laying chickens.
Personal consumption or are you selling the eggs?
No, we're giving it to the dog and it's a personal consumption.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about people coming to the house and traffic and all that?
No.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Yeah, actually that covered my questions. Thanks.
Okay, Bruce?
All right, just to, just to be sure, because I think we've asked all the individual questions, all the requirement questions individually. You're now aware of all the requirements Farmington has for the chicken coop and, and you will comply with them?
Of course.
And, and you will also do the registration form inhabitants section?
That's right, yeah.
Understood. Okay, just wanted to make sure we got that on the record. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. And Mike, any questions?
No further questions, no.
Okay, good to know. My question was about if you've had any animal visits, any bears or foxes or anything like that? You haven't had any problems? Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad. I keep hearing more stories about bears.
I saw bears in my property, but I don't have the chickens yet.
Okay, interesting.
Four of them. Mom and three little ones.
Oh.
But they never go to the coop.
I just have.
Okay, oh, and one more question?
Just clarification, because I was just seeing this here. How many chickens do you have?
18.
Oh, 18. I thought you said 19. Okay.
Okay, that's it. Okay, and this is a public hearing. So, sir, you can sit down and if anyone here would like to ask a question or make a comment, please come on up, state your name and address and.
Good evening. My name is Kerry Callahan. I live at 21 Penn Field Place. Basically back-to-back with the Lipinskis. Our homes are separated by the bike path that runs along New Britton Avenue and some trees and shrubs. My, I'm not really supporting or opposing. I, my inquiry was similar to that raised by Commissioner Zarella. Because, because of the proximity of the properties, we have concerns about roosters being included, especially in the warm weather months when the windows are open and noise can really become a factor, especially for my wife who's, at this stage anyway, home a lot more than I am. My understanding now, based on the answer questions, there are no roosters and there are no plans for roosters.
Okay, correct. And roosters are not permitted. So as the rotation of poultry naturally occurs, as some age out and there perhaps are new ones brought in, sometimes you get a surprise rooster and when that happens, then they are removed.
That's fine, then we have absolutely no problem with the Lipinski's plans to raise hens and to have a coop. And we had the same bear family show up in our area.
Busy neighbors, I guess. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, are there any comments online?
If anyone's called in to offer comment regarding the application for chickens at 1055 New Britton Avenue, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in for the application at 1055 New Britton Avenue, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Madam Chair, there is no hands raised, but we did receive correspondence, an email at the very end of the day. I did print it out. I had shared it with Mr. Lipinski when he arrived. It's here on the, on the screen. I will read it into the record since it, we did not have an opportunity to post it on the website or share it with the commission in advance since it arrived in my email at 4:49 today. I am writing to voice opposition over the special permit approval for 18 chickens and a nine-by-five coop at 1055 New Britton Avenue. Chickens in their coops attract various wildlife that are drawn to the readily available chicken feed, water sources, and the coops which offer safe place to nest and hide. The combination of chickens and the confinement of the chicken coop attract rats, mice, raccoons, opossum, various types of foxes, bears, deers, coyotes. There's a large area of woods close by on the other side on Penn Field Place and further down on New Britton Ave side of the trail these animals live in. Having a large amount of chickens is going to attract even more of these animals. They will be crossing over a trail to get to the chicken coop, which is seen as a food source for wild animals. This trail is used by the public and families and children. This area already has many bears and their cubs that are on Penn Field Place, Red Oak, New Britton Avenue on a regular basis. Attracting more wildlife, looking for food sources from chickens, feed and water in a highly populated area is not wise. In addition to the dangers of attracting more wildlife to the area, the noise of the chickens has to be considered. This is a residential area of back-to-back and side-to-side houses. I have already heard some of the chickens coming from that area. I've raised chickens before on a farm and the odor can be substantial. Again, this is located on the property next to the trail in a residential area. Thanks sincerely, Kirk Goswick, 39th Penn Field Place.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So any other additional questions come up for commissioners? Anything arise?
Yeah, I got a couple. What size is the property?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
What size is the property?
The property?
It's an R20.
Okay, so.
And where is the person who wrote this letter? How close are they?
Yep, I can bring it up on our GIS for us real quick. So this is the, this is 1055. And 1.4 acres as indicated, just entering it in so it gets picked up in the recording. And the individual that entered, Mr. Goswick, is here at 39 Penn Field Place.
And can you point to where the coop is on the Lipinski's property?
So the coop, so I'm going to go back to the presentation slide just for a sec. So here's the, the trail is here in the dark. You can see the pavement for the asphalt for the trail. The white line is their rear, is the Lipinski's rear property line. The shade in blue is a 30-foot CLMP easement and then a 30-foot conservation easement. So their usable area for where the coop could be located is the area outlined in red. So you cannot put it in the, either easement area. So at a minimum, it'll be 60 feet from the trail. And then the regulation is it must be at least 10 feet from a side or rear property line. So at the worst, I believe it's currently located somewhere in this vicinity. Is that correct, Mr.? So it's going to be right here is close to where it's, it's final, final location. Currently it's somewhat, so the photos that I had here, it's somewhat mid-yard, a little more than they intend to. They intend to slide it further. This would be south on the property. So if I go back to the aerial map, so now you're seeing it. So here's the same trail, CLMP easement, conservation easement. There's a boat and then roughly in this area where the tip of the cursor is, is where the coop will be located in this, roughly this area. And there's some, there's a smattering of evergreens seems to be around the majority of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Mike, you all good?
Yes, yep, I'm all good.
Okay.
Actually, I had one question. I'm sorry, I had one question. The letter had to do with two things. It had to do with fear of the bears getting the food or being attracted to the food and also the smell, which are valid concerns, but the food is being contained. It's been, it's in, it's in a sealed container. It's been protected. It's not, it's no, no more of an attractant than a garbage, garbage can would be, correct?
Correct, that's what was entered into the record by Mr. Lipinski.
And then how, I mean, how much smell does, do, do, I don't know, how much smell do 18 chickens can they possibly produce? Is it a, is it a real issue?
Mr. Lipinski indicated the manure is disposed of off-site in the, with waste removal.
Okay.
As, as he needs it for his garden, it's then worked into his garden is what was entered into the record.
Sure. Yeah, no, no other questions then?
Okay. Thank you very much. I think I'm going to, we're going to close the public hearing. And commissioners, and do we understand what we're voting on? Any questions, any concerns, anything?
We have a top level number of chickens on the property.
That's twenty.
Twenty.
Thought we had decided.
Yep, we did. So six are allowed by right. With a registration, they wouldn't have to come before the commission at all. A- and so it's a registration with our office, making sure it adheres to all the parameters that we just went through and that was in the agenda review. So between six and twenty requires a permit with the commission.
Okay. And then max at twenty.
Right. Okay, very good.
I would offer by way of comment, I used to live on that street, a few houses down, with a neighbor who had a chicken coop of about the same size. Never had a single bear problem with it. Bears always went for the bird feeders in the trash cans. Never had.
Your access, I guess?
Never had an issue with the smell. So I, I understand the reason, the cause for concern, but I just offer for my experience that it's not really a concern. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, a, a long with those lines. I mean, if he's had, and that's why I asked, if he's had him for two and a half years and this is the first we're hearing about it, it can't be, you know, a huge issue.
Okay. Uh, ready to vote?
All right.
Okay, we need a motion and a second, please.
I would like to make a motion for approval of the special permit for eighteen chickens and a nine-by-five chicken coop by Stanislaw Lipinski at ten fifty-five New Britain Avenue, R twenty zone. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Enjoy your chickens, Mr. Lipinski. Enjoy your eggs. Okay, and, uh, now we are going to, uh, can go back to the public hearing that we've already opened and that we've continued to tonight. Uh, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, the application for text amendments to the regulation for zoning for concerning off-street parking. Okay.
Just so on the record, I have reviewed video footage from last meeting and I'm prepared to vote.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm just making notes because I get to play all parts tonight.
Keep switching those hatchets.
Taking notes, running the slides, um, and, uh, Garrett, Garrett is also off this evening. His, uh, his wife has a milestone birthday this evening, so, um, so Garrett's.
Happy birthday, Garrett.
So, um, so anyhow, um, there is a presentation. The presentation was posted online. There's been a number of comments posted online, uh, that we've received. So that's all been posted to the website and shared with the commission. If the commission will indulge me just a smidge, I'm gonna take a step back and then I'll move forward, rather quickly. I, I understand, um, there's been some time with this, but I think perhaps, uh, it's warranted taking a, a step back or two. So the current regulation, right, the why, why are we doing this? The current regulation refers to commercial vehicles, um, and I've got it here. So it's in under Article Two, Section One for residential, and then, by reference, it is brought through to all the other residential regulations. And specifically, it states that, um, as a permitted, right, it's permitted uses in residential permitted as a right. Parking or storage of no more than one commercial motor vehicle of not more than one and one-half-ton capacity manufacturer's rating and are designed to have no more than four wheels. For the purpose of this section, commercial motor vehicles shall include those vehicles having commercial or combination license plate. And this regulation shall apply to all land within residential zones. And then for regulations concerning the parking or storage of trailers, mobile homes and recreational vehicles, see Article Four, Section Nine. So that's what it currently says. Um, and as we have discussed through the spring and summer, that the one-and-a-half-ton payload capacity nomenclature is somewhat outdated. It makes it, uh, difficult. The reference differs between manufacturers. The, uh, ability for vehicles to carry heavier payloads has increased multiple times over since this regulation was originally enacted in the early eighties. There's, it doesn't link to anything that we can measure and reference easily. So that was problematic. The combination plate was problematic because of how DMV institutes the combination plate isn't necessarily a commercially-used vehicle, depending on the size of the vehicle. And the limitation to four wheels was problematic for those that had duallys, um, which is needed if they're towing a heavier RV or trailer for, um, just own personal purposes. So, so that's the why. We, we felt there was a need to change this. Staff has, um, had difficulty working with this regulation from an enforcement standpoint. So there's the why. Coming back to now what we have proposed, the what, what are we, what do we want to do with this? The proposed regulation aligns vehicle classification with the Federal Highway, Federal Highway Administration nomenclature. The regulation proposes to allow Class One and Class Two vehicles on residential properties by right, unless they have a commercial plate, and then they fall into the commercial category. Class vehicle, Class Three vehicles are permitted on a residential property on a graduated scale based on the size of the lot. They also had additional restriction with a height limitation. There's a height limitation in there of eight feet and a ten-foot cargo length, which further limits, so it's not open to any Class Three vehicle. Uh, and we can walk through that. It removes the combination plate from this discussion and looks at the size of the vehicle and then whether it's truly being used for commercial purposes and the commercial plate. So when we go back then to our discussion from last month, there were a handful of things that, uh, the commission asked us to consider as part of the comments and the discussion from last month. So this is an updated presentation. It goes with the updated regulation. All of it was posted online. It was shared with the commission. We did not, um, and come into here to definitions. We did not change the definition of commercial vehicle or gross vehicle weight rating that has stayed the same. Um, the edits to the Article Two, Section One that we, I just read to you, those edits have stayed the same, um, so that this is referencing the new regulation for the parking of commercial motor vehicles. And then it just pops in into its own letter, the storage of trailers, mobile homes, and leaves that reference the same. It just separates it out. So it's, uh, differentiated from the commercial vehicle. This off-street parking standard did not change that, um, as Garrett had explained at the last meeting, what we did was group some of these pieces that are in different parts of the reg to put all the residential requirements into one location, which is here. So this, this verbiage here is copied directly into here. So that's the same. It's, has to do with the dimensions of a driveway. The grade for the driveway, uh, we did make an edit. This was at Bruce Sears', uh, request and recommendation that the, not only do we, uh, have the maximum grade of the fourteen percent, but the eight percent for the first twenty feet from the roadway. Mr. Sears asked that we add that in, in this section of the regulation. We have left it in the other section. This is staff's preference for our reference purposes because it leaves it in with the parking with all the other percent information, but we have referenced it here so that when it's changed and one will be able to catch it and change it in the other. We understand that it is duplicative, but it was our preference in this particular case. Uh, in the case of single-family home, uh, there was a reference for this one. The word cars had been in there. We re- removed the word cars and put in vehicles. And, uh, it also removed the word motor, because sometimes we use vehicle, sometimes we use motor vehicle in this particular paragraph. It's just vehicles standing on its own. We removed the word car, and so, um, there's some consistency with respect to. Parking on residential properties. Uh, let me see here. B one A. So this, uh, commercial vehicle not exceeding, uh, Class Three and not exceeding a gross vehicle weight of fourteen thousand pounds, maybe parked or garage provided. It also does not exceed the eight feet in height from the base of the wheel to the top of any cargo in ten feet in box length. And I just put a note in here, accepting mobile homes, recreational vehicles, which are governed by Article Four, Section Nine. So there's no confusion as to how we are handling those. So that was added in since the last meeting. The balance of that regulation and Item Two, there has been no change. Uh, Two A and B, Two C, commercial vehicles shall be parked on the driveway or in a garage, again, to be consistent with our opening that they may be parked or garaged, uh, in a residential zone. So I'm just consistency in language, uh, of the residential lot. And if parked in the driveway, the vehicle shall be parked no closer than five feet from the adjacent property lines unless property properly screened. So, um, I think that takes care of the edits. Go through. So, and then this is the chart. So that takes care of the edits that were made. There was conversation about, uh, B one, the purpose is to restrict, uh, the purpose of the regulation is to restrict the number and location of the vehicles stored within the front yard. That has to do with this. In the case of a single-family home, a turnaround area, circular driveway or area immediately adjacent to the driveway for no more than three vehicles may be placed on the required front yard setback. No vehicles shall be parked or stored on a landscape surface within the front yard, and no vehicles shall be parked or stored within the required front yard. And it was thought that there was, um, an inconsistency between this portion of the regulation and the number of vehicles permitted from a, a commercial vehicle standpoint. And it's, there really isn't. The purpose of this regulation is solely, um, the front yard is the defined front yard from our zoning regulations from the height and area schedule. And that it's limiting the number of vehicles parked in that specific front yard. Anything beyond that front yard is not what this is intended to. And it's intended to also not have them parked in the lawn in the front yard, that it is on the driveway. But we also don't want multiple driveways or a circular driveway with any inordinate amount of vehicles parked in that area. So there really is an inconsistency, uh, with how each portion gets implemented. Okay. Comments that we have received to date? To. There's been a few, and I think it's, and we will enter all the comments into the record, but since the commission has seen them all and just for clarity, so we're not bouncing back and forth. There is concern that the regulation is allowing inordinately large vehicles in our residential zones. And I think what got missed is the fact that we are limiting to the eight feet in height and the ten feet in box length. And I have a few examples. So in addition to the chart that everyone has been familiar with as part of, right, we've seen, we've seen these, and there is some thoughts that perhaps this isn't showing everything that could be, parked within the classifications. So here's another metric of SUV, pickup truck and utility van of a Class One, a Class Two minivan, full-size pickup truck and a large utility van. And then it's not till you get to the Class Three that you have the box truck and the step vans or minivans, even the, the buses. And we did some additional research. So the van, the school buses, so eight feet is ninety-six inches in height. All of these are gonna show in inches. So to the top, the bus is a hundred and twelve inches. And we called, um, our local bus companies actually to confirm and discuss with them and make sure we weren't missing something. The step vehicles are the overall height for these vehicles are,
One sixteen.
Overall height, one sixteen to one twenty. And certainly their cargo length is, is much longer, exceeds a ten feet as well. So all of these, although they are, would be considered a Class Three vehicle, they are going to be excluded and would violate the regulation because they're exceeding the height and length requirement. So they would not be permitted on the residential properties. Requiring parking on paved surface. So our preference is to not add more impervious surface than is absolutely necessary. There's an increase in stormwater runoff. We're an MS four community. We're working to try to not have to add those impervious surfaces. If it's something obviously that a homeowner needs, we're not saying no, but I don't know that there's a reason to mandate, except for what's already in the regulation with respect to the front yard, which is already up in that eight-one A that we just looked at. Uh, setbacks in screening. The regulation does discuss setbacks in screening. Uh, we have many driveways, uh, depending on the size of the lot and the configuration of the garage. There are some, many homes in Farmington have a side entrance garage rather than a front-facing garage that inherently pushes the driveway out further on the property in order to accommodate the swing into the garage. So at times they are closer to the property line than a driveway if you had a straight-on garage. So at times then you will be closer than to, than five feet, which would require then the screening, uh, the fence or the arbor by the, or landscaping, any type of landscaping. So, but that is required based on this regulation. The parking behind the longest rear, rear wall of the home, the recreational vehicle regulation does not require screening. It does require that you're at least ten feet from a property line, but there is no screening requirement. So that's something the commission can consider, um, if they want that added into this regulation, understanding that we're not this regulation is not touching the Article Four, Section Nine regulation. We've left that alone in its entirety. Uh, construction equipment in agr- I, I, the construction equipment, I feel, is similar to the agricultural equipment. There is no current regulation that we have in the zoning regulations to regulate how or where the agricultural equipment is or construction equipment. If there's a building permit on the property, construction equipment is inherently permitted. Again, there are some individuals that use different equipment on their property for snow removal, lawn maintenance, yard maintenance. And that's not the intent of this regulation to start to regulate that. The building official monitors the building permits and the progress. Those vary at length and some proceed quicker than others. That's where we are with that. We did run some statistics with respect to properties and with respect to this chart. And with respect to this chart and our ten thousand square foot. Lot size and less. So. We did, we ran Garrett, Garrett did some number crunching for me today. So he deserved the night off, I suppose. Ten thousand square feet and less. So this is looking just at our residential property, a residential property that has a residential structure on it. So we have residential land that doesn't like winding trails, right? Yukon Medical Centers residential. So we took those out, so it was going to start to throw off percentages. So residentially zoned property with a residential structure on it. There's fourteen percent of those lots are ten thousand square feet or less. And then at twenty thousand square feet or less, it's thirty eight. So that includes the ten and the twenty, so twenty thousand and less is thirty eight percent. And then thirty thousand square feet and less is sixty six percent. Of the lots. We did run it again at fifteen thousand, because I had suggested to the commission. That's something that you can consider in changing this matrix. Fifteen thousand square foot unless there's twenty four quarter of the residential lots. So we don't, then, right as you're looking at this chart, would only have one commercial vehicle, so. And so that would stay the same in those neighborhoods. The thirty thousand and less is the same sixty six, it's nice when the math works that way. And then forty five thousand and less is eighty three percent of the lots. So. That's what we had looked at there. We did land area. And then I had put in the agenda review items for consideration by the commission. Right, it's B two, section B two C, it's the screening. So it's whether the. Six foot fence is the standard fence height, seven foot is permissible without a building permit. Fences over seven feet require a building permit. Fences over four feet in height within the front yard, which are fence exception approval with the TPZ. Which you've had a few of those previously. And the standard for review for a fence exception is the same as that noted in part B here. That a vehicle, vehicles or screening for vehicles shall be parked or positioned so as not to obstruct sightlines from driveways and adjacent railways. Vegetative buffers are also an option. And it just requires a little more time. They ultimately will grow, in theory, will be a taller buffer, but it requires time. Section B two C, screening behind the longest rear, rear wall of the home. Again, talked about, walked through that in what the article four, section nine, B one states. The number of trailers and the, the number in size of trailers permitted on a property. And that other than being ten feet from a side or rear lot line, there's no other screening requirement. Unless a request is made for a special permit to modify one of the requirements. One of the locational quantity, size requirements. So if it goes to special permit, then there's an opportunity then for the commission to require additional screening. And then the final thing for the commission was whether a farm or farmland exemption. Was needed or should be included in the regulation. And I simply noted, as discussed at the last meeting, the current regulation does not regulate farm equipment staff. It was never the intention to include farm equipment in the regulation. And we did some additional research. That. Farm in our definition is a parcel of land containing not less than five acres. And principally used for either the commercial raising of livestock, poultry or crops. And we also looked then at a number of farmers in town. Some of them, the farm has been sold and then the farmer leases back a portion of the area. They've maintained ownership of the residence and leased portion of the, the land back for farming. Or the farmers utilize a good number of the area in the flats for farming. Many of the homes of the farmers would not be on, are not on five acres or less. We, we've got about a fifty fifty split or a thirty seventy split on that. So inherently, some of their vehicles are at their residence. But they don't technically meet the definition. So. I think that's all I have to share. I can entertain, Madam Chair, I'll leave it to you. I can entertain questions from the commission or we can go through the public comment, the written comment that we've already received. I can do whatever the commission would like to do at this point.
Okay, let me get everyone's feelings. Are we ready for discussion, are we ready for questions? Or do you want to have Shannon do the correspondence? Your choice, burning questions that you guys have right now.
I have a couple.
So then let's, then, then we'll, we'll start with questions and then we'll, okay. So. Peter, may you, could you start us out?
Sure thing. Shannon, thank you, thank you to you and your staff for all the work you've done since the last meeting. And continued works on this. I just want to make sure I'm understanding section, article four, section eight A. And the change that says all commercial vehicles shall be parked on the driveway or in a garage. So that. Am I correct in understanding that that means no commercial vehicles could be parked, parked on a yard in the backyard? Am I reading that correctly? That would have to be up on either paved service, surface such as an existing driveway or in a garage.
No closer, or it says or, and then here. Or maybe parked behind the longest rear wall of the home in accordance with the parking and storage requirements for trailers, mobile homes and recreational vehicles.
Okay.
Doesn't.
Okay, that's, that's all I have for questions.
Doesn't have to be, I mean, that was. Thought was a utility trailer, mobile home, one or two of these vehicle. Because the reality is you're not having, on a half acre lot, the tops is two. Right, because you're at the twenty thousand square feet. So the tops would be two other than vehicles. Most people are going to have them in the driveway. There may be at times, one of them is stored in the back. And I figured since it would be smaller than most RVs. So that was a thought process is that with respect to an accessory use or ability. That there would be no objection with that.
Okay.
That was.
Yep, thank you.
Yes.
Also, thank you.
Okay, Bobby.
Um, yeah, again, thank you for all the work. I mean, we've been into this for a while and you guys have crunched some serious numbers and verbiage and done quite a bit with this. And rightfully so, because it was a little outdated. The only thing that I keep sticking on and it's standing out to me right now. Is article four, section eight A, the section D where it says. The commercial vehicle shall be owned or operated by a permanent resident. I'd really like to see the own word out of there for the simple fact of I don't, you know, like Ed mentioned before. I don't want to inhibit somebody. For example, I'll use construction, you know, Manafort. If he's got his pickups all registered commercially. That foreman that just got a promotion isn't going to be able to bring home his company truck. Because it's got a commercial plate on it, because he doesn't own it or Tilcon. Or for that fact, Geico.
It's owned or operated, so it's not, it's not an and, it's an either or.
So we'll be okay with that.
So if it's leased, right, so if it's leased or it's the assigned. What we don't want is a commercial vehicle. Being left at somebody's property because it's convenient, but the individual that's using it. Basis lives in Bristol.
Right, and I, and I follow you and I don't want you guys chasing random calls because the neighbor's complaining so and so's got a truck there.
No, it, it's an or, not an and, so either provision would, would apply.
Okay, all right, then, I mean, you guys have done plenty of work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Dave?
Yeah, I just wanted to second what Bobby said about all the work that's been done. I really appreciate it. I have no questions.
Okay.
I appreciate you presenting and reviewing too this time. I think it was helpful also for people here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I feel that in the intervening time, you know, based on the, the correspondence we've, we've received. Our, our proposal is, is, has been somewhat misunderstood as being somewhat more permissive than it actually is. And I think Shannon, what you just did, you know, by going through all of that, I think clarified it quite a bit. Because I, I think some of the things that people concerned about are not actually concerns they're covered by what we have. And I'm not, I'm not sure why, may, maybe we can, you know, talk about how we're wording it. I, I, like, most of us probably have a little bit of issue fatigue since we've been at this for months and months and months. We want to put it to bed, but we need to get, we need to get it right. Two questions related to that, that I, that I didn't get, get checked in there. If you have a class two vehicle that has a bed that is greater than ten feet or it's taller than eight feet. Is it not permitted as well or it escapes because it's class two and not class three? Because I think that was also one of the concerns.
Yeah, and that's, as I was going through this this evening, honestly, versus I had the same thought. If I'm going to be very, very honest on this. So I think we can add something in that the, the class for the class two vehicle would be the same. Because I looked up. On this lofty little chart, the large utility van, the, which is a class two. The Ford, what I'm not sure of is if it would inherently have to require a commercial plate. Probably ninety five percent of the time, it's going to be a commercial plate. I can't think of a residential, like a truly residential use that, that that's not being used as a, as a business. Vehicle. But I think we can add something in. I looked up, it's a Ford Transit Cargo F two fifty, I think. And some of them, the low version is under eight feet. And is less or right at ten feet in cargo length. But the cab, this, this portion of the van, how it, it scoops up and then continues the back. There's a low profile, a medium profile and a high profile. So some of those do start to get higher than the eight feet. So I think, yes, that could be added in with that. In the definition, that, that class two would, it needs to adhere to that same provision. Or we can just say, oh, so in the definition of the commercial vehicle. You know, the class one and class two are, are permitted, but they would, they need to meet these height and length requirements as well.
Right, and maybe we highlight the height and length requirements. Because I think those are the things that are, are really helping that are, are not as well understood. My, my, my second question was, do we have any opportunity for a. A safety valve, if somebody has a hardship or something, that can they come and get a special permit? You know, let's say we do exclude, you know, the, the class twos and, you know, it's the person's own vehicle. And, you know, they're traveling and they're home to family. They, they present a hardship story. Is there a case to be made for an exception or special permit? Or is our regulation absolute at this point, once we put this text amendment through?
With respect to the style, so something in excess of a class three or something. So we could, so right now there's an exception for a special permit. There, the exception for the special permit is limited to. The side, the quantity. Right, so it's limited to, so the number of commercial vehicles per lot shall not exceed below unless a special permit is granted. It certainly can be. Expanded to allow other classes of, so no different than. It would be similar to the wording that's in article four, section nine for the mobile home. Regulation that allows not only a change, so you can. The commission, someone could apply to the commission for special permit for the mobile home regulation to change the size. The locational requirement, the quantity, pretty much any part of that regulation. So we, this could be set up to do that as well. So someone could apply for a special permit for an exception to. The dimensional criteria that are outlined above, in addition to the quantities itemized below.
It's great. I think then we're, this goes to finish line. That was, that was it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mike, any questions, comments?
Yeah, no, actually, the question that we just went over, the class two versus class three, that's kind of what the email was that I sent you guys. I thought maybe we were getting hung up on classes and how much, how much the vehicles can carry. So Shannon, you talking about the, the size and shape of the vehicles makes sense. I don't know if it would. Go over better with all the people that, you know, wrote in. If we simplified it even more, where we just say something like you were just talking about. Whatever class it is, no matter how much weight it can carry, it can't exceed a certain size.
Yeah, I'd still, I. I think it's helpful for us from a, from looking at this from an enforcement standpoint. I think it's helpful to be able to tie it to a standard. That's my personal opinion on that.
Okay, I, I mean, the question I'm asking is really just to, if we, if we can simplify it and, 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 or, or just keep it the same. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't affect me, but, but after seeing a whole bunch of public outcry and a whole bunch of people arguing about this. And worried that their yards are going to be filled up with box trucks. I think, you know, simplifying it and the, the language you use tonight, I, like, I understand it more when you, when you went through your presentation tonight. So I don't know if it's a question or more of a statement, is, is there a way we can simplify it more so that we don't? I don't know, get as much argument from the public.
Yeah, some of it's, it, it's. Some of it's the nuance of a, of a zoning regulation. So it's how you discuss it conversationally versus what I need to have in writing. So that it stands up when my, our town attorney needs to wrangle with it.
Yep.
So it's conversational that, yeah, so you're talking about when I, at the start of the presentation. When I got into the, what are we really doing with this, right? That, at, at that front end of it, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, no, that, that was great. It's like, what are we actually doing right now? You know, that, and, and it made sense. It, it all makes sense to me. And, and explaining it clearly like you did will hopefully make it make sense to a lot of people that didn't understand it, maybe wrote in about it. The only thing I was asking is, are we even, are we able to even simplify it more? I mean, we just go back to the whole like class two, class three, size and shape of pickup trucks are the exact same trucks. So then the regulation that you put in there about, you know, the, the eight feet high, ten feet long, that makes more sense to me. Because that's excluding, you know, big commercial type vehicles from being parked in people's yards. But it's not putting a limit on a class two versus a class three or how much weight it can carry. Or it's GVWR, it's, you know, it, it, we're not worried about if they make a electric Hummer. Five thousand pounds heavier for some reason, like it's, we're not so much worried about the weight of a vehicle or how much weight it can carry. We're, we're worried more about the size and the shape. Because people don't care if their neighbor has a really heavy vehicle. People care if they have a big ugly vehicle.
Well, yes. Well, yes, um, but with the exception, it, it depends, right? Beauties in the eye of, the eye of the beholder with respect to some of these big pickup trucks.
Um, yeah.
And the, the number of them, um, certainly the step van vehicles is, um, you know, those are, are commercial inherently.
Absolutely. So like size and shape versus, uh, GBWR.
But the, the larger vehicles, as you start to get into the, the, the much larger pickup trucks, um.
The class four trucks are much larger. Class three pickup trucks are the exact same shape and size as class two.
Well, at some point, again, I think we've got to set, there has to be a limit. And I'm, I'm back to where we were with the reg, the existing regulation. I just want to be careful that we don't inadvertently swing the pendulum too far.
Yeah, no, 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 I don't want to swing it too far either way. I, I also want you guys not to have to do this again in five years.
Uh, I would agree with that.
Okay, um, anything else, Mike, or?
No, I think that's it.
So, okay, um, my turn. Um, thank you, Shannon and Garrett, for all this really heavy duty detailed work. And really keep answering all our questions that keep coming and that keep coming. And because of that, I have one more.
That's all right.
Um, when we're talking about the ten foot length, this is, I just want a clarification. That's ten foot bed length, so excluding cab? And what are we talking about when we have a, um, uh, you know, a king cab? So that's, my question is, I, I, I'm a visual person. Do you have a picture?
So it, it's defined, and again, we use wording similar to what we found in Enfield, Plainfield, Plainville, excuse me, Plain, Enfield, Plainville, um, and some of the other communities that we, we referenced. So it's some of that consistent language that has held those communities in good stead. So when we come to this guy.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so van, the cargo length that we're talking about is this, uh, two. So this is, uh, cargo, I've got these cargo, capacity cargo overall length and then cargo length.
Ah, okay.
Cargo length behind, there's what they call the overall cargo length and then the cargo length behind the bulkhead.
Oh, okay.
So it's different. So that's, it's with the, the actual carrying area, not the passenger area.
Okay.
So, so that would be the passenger area here where, you know, driver and passenger or the door, the open door, ready to see a guest truck or whatever.
Okay.
It's their step down area versus the cargo where the packages are stored. Um, so the same for, say, this van, this van typically has just two seats in it.
Right.
So what I was seeing, and that's in this fun chart. So that's the twenty-five transit cargo van. So there's, there's a regular length, there's a long length, there's an extra long length. And then here's your low, medium and high profiles with your roof heights. Um, your overall length, here's your height, your heights. So your heights vary, again, ninety-six inches is eight feet. So, um, your medium and high go over the eight foot, but your low does not. But when we come into cargo length, so that's ten feet, so that's a hundred and twenty inches. Your cargo length at floor is over in all cases.
Okay, yeah.
Cargo length at belt, which is from the seat, so it's a little different. So this one, because you could slide, so if you had, oh, like a ladder or sheet, like plywood or whatever, you can slide it under the seat to a certain length for the, wherever the brackets are for the seat. So your cargo storage on the floor is more than the cargo storage, uh, what they call belt, which is gonna be to the back of the seat, basically, for conversational purposes. So that's a little less and that's just under the hundred and twenty. But it was, for the most part, except for the low profile, it was exceeding the height requirements.
Okay.
So, but that's a case where, so for the class two, right, it's a class two vehicle, but in some instances, it's over. I've got to believe in most cases that would have a commercial plate on it when you're getting into the medium and high profile and the extra long. In which case, it's gonna get kicked in to the regulation anyhow. But it's a valid point brought up that we should make sure that for the class two, that if it's the eight to ten, i- it can't exceed that eight to ten feet.
Okay, okay, okay. Are we gonna call him Grande and Vente and? Extra Vente, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, May.
Um, okay, um, the other point, um, I understand Mike's point attempting to make this as simple and easy and user friendly as, as, uh, possible. But I value having a recognized, a nationally recognized, um, standard uh, to hold up against. I think that puts us in better stead using the, uh, the, the highway.
Standard federal highway.
Standard federal highway. Can't remember my acronyms. Um, but I, I find the value in that because it's not just, oh, well, in twenty twenty-five, they thought this was a good number or picked this up. I like having it a, a nationally recognized standard.
Okay.
So, any other questions?
Yeah, one, and I think I know the answer. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Um, Shannon, do we have any special needs housing or anything like that in town that would require them to have, like, one of those mini buses to transport their clients in that are going to be hindered by this regulation?
Um.
Cause I just thought of that. They're gonna fall over that eight foot.
Right.
You know what I mean? But, I mean, we also allow one per location. I don't know if any of them have more than one.
Yeah, but they, one per location is for commercial, but they.
And they're probably gonna be registered.
Can't exceed the ten, so that, so a commercial vehicle not exceeding a class three, not exceeding a gross vehicle weight of fourteen thousand, um, parked or garage, it cannot exceed.
Eight feet in height, which it's going to, yeah.
So, um, we can put an exemption in, an ADA exemption, excluding, except, just like I did, but accepting mobile home, I guess, excluding ADA transit vans.
Compliance vehicles or something.
Community transit vans, I, we're not, it, quite honestly, some of the bus drivers being buses home, the, the smaller buses are buses home because they've got back to back routes.
Right, 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 right.
Uh, again, I think we've got to come back to, some of this has to be implemented with a little bit of reasonableness.
Right, and I'm not worried about the guy that brings it home for lunch. I'm worried about, you know,
Yeah.
the, the van that's parked there overnight because it's a, it's a special needs home.
Right, uh, I think m- most of them are either state owned, which, or I'm not regulating anyway.
Okay.
Or they're multi-family, that what I'm coming to is the eighty and ninety South Road with the Faber residence, sixteen hundred New Burton Avenue with Faber residence.
Correct.
Those are multi-family and that doesn't, this is single family residential.
Gotcha.
We're not, this is not for multi-family residential. So we're probably okay.
Okay, okay.
But it, it doesn't hurt to have an exception. We can put the same thing, excepting ADA transit. Special needs, special needs transit.
Great, okay, that's a very good question. Good catch. Okay, uh, commissioners, we can, if we, something else comes up, we can do that. Uh, now I'd like to open it up to public comment, um, if you've had some, something like this.
Adam Chair, do you want me to get the written comment in?
Yes, I apologize. Yes, let's do that first and then we will get public comment.
Yeah, I gotta make myself a note so I don't forget here. Okay. And again, so these have been shared with the commission in advance. These have been posted to the website. So unlike the prior letter that was read verbatim into the record, my intent is not to read all of these verbatim into the record. They will show on the screen, they will be acknowledged into the record, they will be captured in the recording. But I think I've got eleven or twelve of these and some of them are multiple pages, so that was not going to be read into the record verbatim. Uh, November seventh, uh, twenty twenty-five, we received a letter from Josh Davidson at seventy-four Basswood Road, uh, providing comment to the commission in opposition to the current regulation. Um, and Mr. Davidson enumerates his, uh, concerns with the regulation with respect to by right allowance, special permit requirements, the paved surface mandate, screening requirements, and then heavy equipment, uh, storage. The letter goes on to provide other examples of vehicles in varying classifications in the class ones through eight, and then examples of vehicles that are per se. We received an email from Alma Jackson in opposition to the regulation as written and asked for consideration for residents, uh, to park normal pickup trucks, vans, SUVs, require a special permit for heavy duty vehicles, require vehicles to be on paved surfaces and require screen. Oh, received an email from Josh Davidson on November ninth. And there's a discussion about outdated one and a half ton rule, uh, current regulation being too permissive, and that was in the email. We, there's a letter as well that came in on November ninth from Mr. Davidson. Again, enumerates the outdated rule, the class two loophole, a junkyard scenario. Um, discusses a bright line solution to the regulation that was proposed. A number of other solutions that are enumerated in his letter. And then a proposed regulation, uh, that differs from the regulation that was entered into the record, uh, this evening. So, uh, talks about passenger vehicles and then other edits to the regulation. Uh, Catherine Zelko from nineteen Lantern Court entered an email into the record in opposition to the regulation as drafted and enumerated, um, similar comments, uh, for residents to park normal trucks, a special permit for heavy duty vehicles, parking on paved surfaces and screening of vehicles. Um, I'm not sure who. Lyndera sent an email that, uh, simply opposed the regulation change to allow large trucks to park in our neighborhoods. Mercedes Alonso and Lyle Court issued an email enumerating the same four items. And you'll see this is, uh, consistent through a number of these. So the same items have been enumerated to the commission. Bridget Geis, uh, twenty-four Basswood entered an email into the record, again, in opposition to the regulation as written, requesting same items be considered by the commission. Paul Samborn, uh, sent a letter into the commission uh, in opposition to the regulation as written, um, concerned with large vehicles. Um, and that there's most, mostly with large vehicles in residential zones. Rebecca Holyoke sent an email in, again, the same four items there, so enumerated there with, um, asterisks, but the same four, uh, items for the commission to consider with respect to this regulation. It's not gonna work.
Okay.
Okay, that's, uh, I don't know that. So Mr. Bartucca, there's a William Bartucca from Red Oak, uh, had submitted a letter, uh, an email in opposition to the regulation, again, with concerns, um, about the large vehicles on residential properties. Arlene Klein, uh, sent an email in, uh, from Hope Farms, again, uh, concern with class two, class three vehicle and the vehicles parking on the road and the, uh, residential roads being near or. And Lisa Troy sent an email in expressing concern with the, uh, regulation as written. Again, the class two plus three vehicles, how they'll be parked and where, uh, and this was not in favor of the regulation as written. And that is, I believe, takes care of all the public correspondence that came into us regarding this. And all of that had been shared with the commission in advance and posted, um, line.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that, Shannon. Okay. So now, public comment is now open. Please come up. We'd like to hear from you. Come up, give us, come on up and give us your name and address and.
Um, my name is Jewel Burke. And I live on Lovely Street in Unionville. So the only thing that I noticed didn't come up in conversation, especially, you know, in the wording, you don't want these vehicles parked in the driveways near the street. They would be, if I have this right, um, allowed in the rear of the houses, rear lot, is that what you were saying?
So they, they can't, no, we do, they are permitted in the driveway.
Okay.
Yep.
They are permitted in the driveway, we just. If the dry, you know, in the driveways that go behind the house?
Yes.
And up the side yards?
Yes, they, they just can't, so within five, if it's within five feet of the adjacent property, then a fence or vegetative screening is required.
Okay, the only concern I have with that is, um, there was no consideration of the noise that these type of trucks generate. Um, so you can have screening, you can have the big bushes and things like that. But just these types of trucks, especially the dump trucks, the landscaping trucks, um, and, you know, over, I can't, I don't know exactly what weight, um, per household going by the lot size would be there. But they do dr- generate a lot of noise and I kind of know this from personal experience. Um, not just the noise, the noise due to their size, but, um, the backup beep, well, I know is required. Um, it's often and it's actually super annoying. Um, and also I noticed a lot of these trucks, they do require a lot of upkeep and a lot of this maintenance is done at the homes that own these trucks. Um, anywhere from welding machines to air compressors to drills on and off, um, all week, on the weekends and things like that. Um, so that was not really brought up. Um, you're talking about big ugly vehicles, but these big ugly vehicles make a lot of noise. So when they are parked up the side of the, somebody's yard and in the back, that's actually parallel to my backyard. So that should be considered. Um, safety wasn't really brought up either. If these are in a lot of residential neighbors, the other question I had, this, does this apply to R twenty?
All residential zones.
Okay, alright. Um, so the safety, you know, a lot of these residential zones have a lot of kids, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of people walking on sidewalks. Um, I personally have seen a lot of near misses. Um, a lot of times these trucks pulling out of the driveways do take up both lanes because they're so big. And if they have a trailer attached to them. And if they have a trailer attached to them, I've seen traffic. I live on a busy road, so I've seen traffic stopped both, both sides of Lovely Street to accommodate these trucks pulling in and or backing in, they prefer to back in. So it's easier for them to get out. I actually witnessed a car have to drive up onto the side of the road, onto the sidewalk to avoid hitting it. So safety wasn't brought up either. And then the monitoring, so I had a lot of issues with this person and following the rules, being sent multiple letters and not complying to the rules. So I think that how these vehicles and the zoning laws are going to be monitored. If we're having trouble now, I think the complaints are going to be tenfold. So I think you're going to be inundated with complaints and I don't think you're gonna, I mean, I think it's going to be really difficult to, people are gonna like not understand. They're still going to have questions just because they're not versed in this type of language. So I think that the monitoring of these is going to be really difficult. And I do think people are going to take advantage. I don't think everybody is a rule follower. So so I think the three big things for me is the noise and screening can't block out that noise. The safety and then of course, the, the monitoring of what's going on at all these places. And it's not that I don't think some things need to be changed. I completely agree. But I think it's going to be a free for all and I, and I live it and it actually has impacted our life greatly. If you have a second. Just wanted to show you something and give you just a little example of what I have parallel to my backyard. So that's my backyard and that is allowing the R20. That, that's got to be 16,000 to 17,000 capacity, two of those. That, the tenant has two of those. There's two of those. He finally agreed to get rid of one, but he's allowed to park this one. This is all parallel to my backyard, which is from here to about that window. So my issue is who's going to be monitoring all of these new regulations? I'm not saying everybody in town is going to act like this and not follow what they were asked, when they were asked to follow the zoning laws as they are now. But I don't think everybody is going to follow the rules and it's actually, you know, our property values. I was, I was selling my house and somebody was looking at my house. These people pulled in and thinking that they're not going to buy my house. So I think the noise, the fence isn't going to help with the noise, the bush is not going to help with the noise. And it's just gonna, I think it's just gonna be less. So I think it needs to be thought about a little bit more before it maybe gets to me. So, and I have audio of the noise because the, the fixing of the trucks is every day, all day. So I can always send that to you if you would.
Thank you. Okay, and anyone else? Come on up. Oh.
Hi, my name is Arlene Klein. I live at 43 Coke Farms Road in Farmington. I sent a letter which has, which delineates my concerns and I'm not going to repeat what I have in my letter. But based on what I heard tonight, I have a couple of other concerns. You seem to be focusing a lot on the size of a vehicle, the length, the height of the vehicle, rather than on the aesthetics of a vehicle. Some Cadillacs, and I don't own one, but a Cadillac Escalade, I think it's an EVU, is just as big and just as long as some of these cargo trucks. I think it's 228 inches long. If they're, I believe they cost something like 150, $160,000. If somebody wants to park two of those next to my house in their yard, I'm probably not going to be upset about that. It's not going to lower my property values. But if you take one of these ugly vans, the same size, and park that in the yard next to me, I'm afraid that it's going to lower the value of the neighborhood. And, and as Julie said, somebody coming into the neighborhood to look at a house and sees these commercial trucks up and down the street, I believe is not helping the aesthetics of the neighborhood or the property value of the neighborhood. I'm not sure why we are at this point where you believe you need to change the regulations in such a drastic way. I, I'm not, I, I understand that now there are SUVs and certain pickup trucks that don't fall within the regulation, the way the regulation existed. But so maybe you just add that rather than trying to reinvent a wheel. One, one issue is the enforceability of all of this because you're kind of asking neighbors to sort of turn in other neighbors and it doesn't always happen. And I think what does happen is unless it's a real problem with safety, with concerns of children or blocking driveways, you're not going to hear from people. And that's from my own personal experience. Right now on my street, there's an old bus, I don't know what he's got it converted into, but when you were showing the pictures, it's, it's the color of that blue, the blue pictures that you had of the trucks online, it's that sort of canary color blue. It's very loud when he starts it up and, and he drives it up and down our street. Nobody is complaining. I think we all kind of are not happy with it, but again, turning in a neighbor is kind of a difficult thing. I also, for many, many years, and you haven't addressed this, a boat, like a a speedboat on a trailer is smaller than some of what you're talking about allowing in a driveway. And you know, my feeling of the boat was it wasn't making any noise, it wasn't bothering anyone, but aesthetically it looked kind of bad. If I thought I was going to be selling my house at the time when he had his boat in the yard, the guy has since moved. I may have asked him to move it. So you're asking neighbors to police this and I'm not exactly sure that that's the best way to go about all of this. I'm not sure if there's anything else that you can do. You have nothing written in there in terms of fines if people go against the regulation or what are you going to do? You're going to write warning letters and then another letter and then maybe start to find the person? Because it doesn't seem to be any recourse of what happens if they don't follow the regulations. But again, I think I would look a little bit at the aesthetics of what somebody is parking in the yard rather than just the size and the height of the length rather and the height of what's being put in, in the driveways. And one last thing, I'm not quite understanding. You're, you're talking about the size of the lots in terms of what people could park in their driveway. My, I guess I have a question of doesn't it more concern how large the driveway is? My driveway will hold four cars. Besides the two cars that go in the garage, I can park two, two, four more cars in my driveway. There are other driveways on my street where they could probably park six to eight cars. So I think the length of the driveway has something to do with what people park in, in, on their driveway, not so much whether it's the size of the lot. Just might be something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Corinne Labouthe here, 36 Privor Avenue in Unionville.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Corinne Labouthe here. I concur with Julie and Arlene. The only thing that I also wanted to ask was, how many vehicles can they park now legally, one and a half? Is it, and we're asking to park more, is that why?
It's one, it's one commercial vehicle.
And we want to go up to three?
Up to three, depending on the size of the lot, the larger the lot. So as it's written, the regulation as it's written is still one vehicle for a lot that's 10,000 square feet or less. Two vehicles for a lot that is 20,000 square feet or less and three vehicles for a lot that is 30,000 square feet or less.
Okay, so if people would like to park additional vehicles, shouldn't they get their own business like for parking and that instead of parking? I can understand one, like for a truck, but doing dump trucks and these larger vehicles is kind of getting out of hand. If we're going to say you can park three vehicles that size on a lot. And so that's, that's just my, that's my, that's it. But I concur with everyone else who have spoken so far.
Thank you very much.
Parking on the street too.
Like Frontier, they park up and down our street all along on Sullivan Avenue all day long. And that's another safety issue too that we have with them. But we used to have parking signs, but some, for some reason they were taken down. So safety is a big issue, especially with all the little kids in our neighborhood and waiting for the buses and stuff walking down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, come on.
I'm sorry.
Because it's being recorded, yeah, so.
Just to concur with Arlene about neighbors turning neighbors in. So unfortunately, that's what's going to happen. And I was met with a lot of retaliation and I still am from this person. And it actually has impacted our life a lot, but that's what's going to happen. You're not going to, everything's not as kind of dry as it looks on paper.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Shannon. Thank you all for continuing. I know you've been at this for I'm sorry, Josh Davidson, 74 Basswood Road. Thank you. I know you guys have been at this for months and I appreciate that. I would encourage you to continue past tonight because I don't think we're there yet. I appreciate Shannon, you and the staff going through and reviewing my many suggestions amongst others and reviewing some of that tonight. And I appreciate some of the clarifications. I will however, want to point out still, I think there's some maybe misunderstandings about the way some of these vehicle classifications work and what vehicles are included in different classes. I think we maybe were starting to get there, but I want to be really clear. So, and to the point, I forget the commissioner who's on Zoom. I think there was some, some common sense being spoken there and I appreciated those comments about size. So first, from a class two perspective, the way that the regulation is currently written. Class two, if, if Shannon would be so kind as to pull up one of my multiple comments, so she may not be able to find it, but if, if she can, if not, that's okay. But there was one of them that included examples of class two vehicles, commercial vehicles. They included a boom truck. Well, so there, there's one that's a step van that was a class two. And there was a different email that had, it was the slides where there were two slides and on one of those slides, there was a class two examples and class three examples. There was a, a van that has a boom on it, like for lifting someone up into the air to a telephone pole or utility pole. There was a bus that I understand that you're saying that a school bus is too large. But there are examples of buses that are class two. And so once it, when it's class two, my understanding is again, the dimensions don't apply.
Correct. So we discussed that this evening and the intent is to make that change.
Okay.
So we, I thought that was discussed and clarified.
Okay, well, there's no like official, like we agree to something. So I'm, I would just make my point. So appreciate it, but I think that we've lost our way a bit here too, because I think in my mind, the point here was we want people to be able park larger, heavier, personal vehicles that may happen to be pickup trucks or SUVs. I'm all for it. I have no problem with that. I don't think, as Arlene said, nobody's against that. I think what we're against is trying to say that somehow we can't determine the difference between a personal pickup truck and a commercial vehicle and suddenly now allowing all of these potential commercial vehicles on, in residential neighborhoods. It doesn't make any sense. I don't know who's asking for this and I don't understand why we're headed down that path. In terms of enforceability, gross vehicle weight ratings can change over time. Just because it's a federal standard today doesn't mean it will always be. Gross vehicle weight rating also doesn't change when someone modifies a vehicle. So if someone takes, for example, a cargo van and puts a boom truck, a boom lift on top of it, the gross vehicle weight rating doesn't change, but the weight of the vehicle changes, the nature of the vehicle changes. And it is now clearly a commercial vehicle. And if you happen to use that commercial vehicle for cleaning your windows at your house, I don't think that's appropriate for someone to be able to have that, to choose to do that. Similarly, the example, the point about construction equipment that I raised in some of my comments. I'm dealing with a situation with a neighbor who has a six wheeled, flatbed pickup truck, who's been allowed to do so to keep it on his yard, in his backyard, move it around because he has an open building permit for 10 years on his property. And the planning department has said, well, because he hasn't closed out the building permit, he's allowed to continue that. So that's a huge loophole in, in any of these things. He also keeps a Baco with a loader on it as well and moves these things, things around as well as a Jeep and another farm tractor. This isn't a residential property. It's not a farm. It's about an acre and a half and it looks like a junkyard. And to some of the points made here before, I think you guys are coming at this, I think, from a a reasonable perspective and not everyone is going to be reasonable. Not everyone is going to use the best judgment. And we have to sort of account for sort of the least common denominator here. And people who will get four of these largest truck you can possibly dream of and park it five feet from a property line right next to your backyard where you want to swing in a hammock or do whatever it is you want to do in your front, your backyard. And it's unsightly, it can be noisy, the exhaust. And it just looks poor. I don't think it's appropriate for a residential community. I, I think that we need really think long and hard about this. And I also think we need to look at why are we even allowing more vehicles for larger properties? What's the reasoning for that? Is there an assumption in that it's somehow it will be less impactful to a neighbor to allow more vehicles? And if it is, then I'd say, why are you assuming that? Because there's nothing in the regulation that actually requires where those vehicles are parked. So if you have a larger, larger parcel, you're allowed to have more vehicles, but it doesn't require you to keep them in a place that is less impactful to a neighbor. So if that's the reasoning, I don't follow without some sort of screening or location requirements, either site plan requirements that need to be reviewed and a special permit, screening requirements. I encourage you to look at those things again. I understand that it's complicated. I understand you've been at this for a while, but I just don't think we've quite got it right. Let me see. I don't want to duplicate things that I've said before. Since you guys had a good conversation, I'm trying to filter here. I, I think the, the one clear suggestion is that rather than just looking at gross vehicle weight is to look at the body type and to say that if it is a factory pickup truck or SUV, right, body, then it is a non-commercial vehicle. If it is anything other than that, then it's a commercial vehicle because that is the purpose that it is being built for. So in other words, if it has a, a dump body, if it has a flatbed, if it has a crane truck, a bucket truck, a water truck, anything like that, right? If its purpose is clearly commercial, it's like you know it when you see it, that's a commercial vehicle versus a pickup truck. I, I think that's a reasonable standard that can be documented and can be enforced just as easily as a gross vehicle weight, which, which again, doesn't really represent the weight of the vehicle itself, nor really the size, which is why you're having to put size limits. So I think thinking about the nature of the, the vehicle and what its purpose is, is some things that I'd like to ask you guys to consider. Yep, okay, that's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Yep, come on up.
My name is Patty Labouthe, Privor Avenue, Unionville. I'd like to go on record opposing this proposal as this presented this evening. And I also would like to know the reason that is being done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or any other speakers in the room? Okay.
James Pugs, 256 Main Street, Farmington. It seems to me a lot of people don't understand what you're doing. I spoke with Shannon a little bit about it when she was proposing it. And we never had, really had problems years ago. Except when somebody would park a commercial vehicle in the front yard on the driveway. And then neighbors sometimes would get upset. Vehicles have changed an awful lot. Vehicles have changed an awful lot. And what used to be a commercial vehicle. You know, maybe a van or something like that, or pickup trucks. Well, pickup trucks has, have become everyday drivers. For everybody. I don't care where you are. You can't buy a pickup truck nowadays that. Is a stripped down model. I mean, I think, I think I got the last twenty sixteen that, you know, you just, doesn't have anything fancy in it. So. I think that it's been addressed. With the height regulations, the length regulations, the size. And this does actually give them something to work off of. It's. It's fairly straightforward. You're not, if you got somebody parking four tractor trailers in their backyard and they're a residential zone, it's not allowed by this. It, it's. Simply not allowed by this regulation. If they're parking four large dump trucks, it's not allowed by this regulation. And actually, the majority of zoning regulation is going to fall back to the neighbors. Neighbors are going to have to be the ones that report it. Because. There just isn't time enough for town employees to go around and pick it out. But you're not, you're also not going to get every landscaper in this town. That might have a couple of vehicles and parks them in his backyard or parks them on his driveway in the front yard. To shut their business down. Because. They're not allowed to have their trailers and their, and their trucks parked at their yard. Or they, they have to go rent a place somewhere, which, oh, by the way, we don't really have. We don't have parking lots that you could go to and rent a spot to park your vehicles and not have your stuff stolen. So. Had a lot more to say, but I'm not going to. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments within the room? Okay, Shannon, can we open it up to online comments?
Sure. If anyone has called in to offer comment regarding the commercial vehicle regulation, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you will be acknowledged to address the Commission. If anyone's called in to offer comment on the commercial vehicle regulation, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to address the Commission. Adam Chair, there's no hands.
Okay, thank you very much. Now I'm gonna open it back up to Commissioners, have any questions that have come up, any, anything that you need to be addressed? Anyone? Everyone's. Everyone's good. I'm getting head nods. Mike, did you have any other additional questions that have come up?
No, I, I think I said everything before.
Okay, great. I guess right now we are at a point where we have to.
Madam Chair, can I offer?
Most.
A few thoughts on some of the comments that were made?
Please. Continue the conversation.
Yeah, well, and I know it's getting late, so I won't take a ton of time, but. With respect to enforcement. I think we've been clear with the Commission multiple times. Staff is not out. Hunting for, sometimes we're just driving around and we see it and we address it, right? But if it's back tucked into a neighborhood or it's a truck leaving at six AM and coming back at six PM. We're not, unless somebody reports it to us, we are not going to know. It has to be reported to us. I'm going to say. Eighty percent of the time it's reported to us, twenty to twenty-five percent, we find it as we're out doing other inspections and doing other things. And it's incredibly time consuming. We probably, it, it's twice as long to address an enforcement issue as it is to review a set of plans that comes in before you. In some cases, not all, some are compliant. Mr. Lipinski got his letter, called Garrett, came in, did his presentation. Mr. Lipinski's like one out of ten. So. With respect to the comments that Mrs. Burke made with her situation on Lovely Street. Staff has been involved in that and it's been incredibly aggravating. And part of this, we're hoping is this regulation will give us a few more teeth. To perhaps address some of those concerns that the existing regulation just doesn't have. We've been around and around and around on that. So it's been a number of offices in the town. Let's see here. Commit, we, I guess the Commission overall, we need to decide, I'm looking back, so safety. Safety in kids and monitoring the, safety as the individual, right, coming and going and there's, there's only so much. It's no different than we look at traffic studies and parking lot layouts, et cetera. At some point, there's individual responsibility with some of this. The monitoring is staff. Aesthetics. We can't really regulate solely based on aesthetics anymore than, right, somebody's in, in individual landscaping preferences, individual. House styles and, and maintenance. There are some limits to what we can regulate from an aesthetics. There has to be a measurable, quantifiable. Right? And sometimes you take the good with the bad with that. And again, right now, a commercial vehicle is allowed, so you can have some of these utility vehicles. Somebody could go park one in a driveway right now. The way the regulation is written. Fines. Believe the Commission's aware, but so the zoning regulations then go back to the town. We do issue letters of enforcement. When they are ignored, not followed, then yes, we issue a notice of violation. There are citations, there are fines. It then goes to a hearing officer. We have to appear at the police department. It is a very laborious, time-consuming process. So we try to get correction as opposed to fines, but that is the process. And there's mechanisms in the town ordinance for issuing fines and then. Adjudicating them. The size of the lot versus commercial vehicle rather than the driveway length. Again, the size of the lot and driveway length, most of the time, right, the larger the lot, the farther the house is set back, the longer the driveway, the more vehicles can be accommodated. Not always, but again, we're using a metric. The Commission with respect to. Right, so I would, before we leave tonight, would like some direction as to what the Commission thinks on. The, the chart where we think we want to go with this. Whether we think we want this chart, we want to reduce the number of vehicles, put more in special permit, go to fifteen thousand square foot increments. There's a couple of options. We're going to need some direction on this. We talked about the class two vehicles and the eight foot, ten foot. I think we can get somewhere with that. I think I need to hear from the rest of the Commission if we want to open up. Other elements of this to special permit opportunity as Commissioner Polsky mentioned. Or if we want it just for the quantity based on size of lot. It can certainly be opened up to other elements. And I need to hear from the Commission about screening, if there's additional screening, understanding that. Regardless of what gets put up, if somebody's going to look out their second floor window to their neighbor's yard. And you're on half acre lots, you're going to see in your neighbor's yard. It doesn't matter what you, you put, unless you've been there forever and you've got a wall of twenty foot or twenty foot high arborvitae or evergreens. So, and there's topographic changes, so there has to be some reasonableness to the, the screening. But certainly screening can be. Can be more stringent for this. We don't have to allow the parking at the back of the yard. We put it in because we thought it's not much different than the motorhomes. If the Commission feels differently, that can come out. So I think I've touched on. Most of the items that were brought up. And then we can go from there.
I think to, to reinforce some, something you said that I think is, is really, really important. If we, if we choose not to do this, we're actually leaving Farmington in a worse position. And many of the people in the room in a worse position for having issues with where trucks are parked because of the outdated regulation. And you may think maybe we're not being tough enough, but one of the things we have to do is, is balance as best as we can. And maybe over time, we would want to, want to, want to take it further. But it's, it, without, without doing this, we have no teeth. Julie, I'm sorry, don't, don't remember your last name from Lovely Street, but the picture you showed me, that vehicle would, if we pass this, that would not be allowed. And enforcement to take, to take place. A, a separate issue with respect to enforcement, longer term.
And I don't, and I really, you know, you're right, I should maybe educate myself a little bit more. How is these new zoning regulations going to make it harder for him to keep doing this? I don't know. That I don't know. She just said it would, it would make it harder for him. How? I don't know.
We, we're not a lawmaking body, so there's no remedies i- in this. This is not the, the legislature, so there's no public executions coming with this.
Shannon brought a lot of good things in the comments that I keep thinking to be discussed. And I am doubting before you do tap it, like the screening. Are these cars and are these commercial trucks involved in that? Yes or no? You know, things like that. I mean, I think there's still, I think there's still so many gray areas. And I think there is more for people to understand. You understand it. But obviously, there's so many other people that don't understand it. I don't know how to fix that. I don't know if we have to have like a town referendum. I don't know if we do this in that case. Some sort of newsletter that goes out with a language a little simple for people that aren't opposed in this. But it does sound like a really huge deal. And I feel like it's not a big deal. Come on, guys, it's not a big deal. That's how I feel of being perceived. So I think I do need to understand more, but I think. Every situation is different. Mine's extreme. I just think that we need to hire a few more consultants and maybe educate the. County Farmington is also, we were being compared to Plainville and Enfield. But we're not like Plainville and Enfield. We're like Avon, Sinbury, West Hartford. What are their regulations? I can't imagine them about them. But we're being compared to Plainville and Enfield, but we're not like them. Our demographics are probably very different to ours. So that is a little confusing. So that's.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, my, my comments, Commissioners. I appreciate, I live in this town too, and I want it to be nice, but we are not arbiters of taste. So I, I understand if you find a truck is ugly. It's, it's, it's a truck.
Okay.
So, but we can't, we can't go back and forth in this conversation.
Because none of this is getting picked up in the.
Right. So I, this is just my comments. I, I think we are trying to listen to and, and. Get as much information as we can, and this feedback has been very helpful. And I, I, I think we probably have more finessing to do, especially on the consideration of lot size and, and things like that. So I'm looking at my fellow Commissioners. And is this a situation where we would continue the public hearing if we would like to finesse the rules? I'm, I'm actually asking you, Shannon.
Yeah, I think at this point, so if we want to make some of the changes that have been discussed this evening, we should probably continue to December.
Okay.
I. Need some direction or consensus on what the Commission would like to see.
Okay.
Point. So I can, I can make the changes, but I.
Right.
Some consensus would be helpful.
Okay, so am I getting that, do we, we all feel that we need, we have a little more work to do, a little more fine tuning?
Yes.
Am I getting that feedback? Okay, good. So we will not close the public hearing.
Yeah.
We will continue. Now, when it comes to the lot sizes, which seems to be kind of a, a, a pretty major point. And Shannon is asking for our input. What, what do we think about that? Do we feel we need to? Go to the fifteen thousand foot. Demarcations or. Or eliminate graduated sizes?
I'd like to start with a little bit more of a general comment about.
Please.
Sort of how my, where my thinking is on this. I mean, I think the existing regulation definitely needs updating. It's, I, I don't think it's readily enforceable. And, and so I, I think we are moving in the right direction in that regard. Some of the changes I. The things that stick out to me, one is that the old regulation allowed for one commercial vehicle. Now we're up to possibly four, two vehicles in a lot of lots in town. I could understand two, my thinking on sort of the purpose of allowing commercial vehicles is that. We don't want to punish residents who drive their commercial trucks to work. You know, they're not operating a home, a business out of their home. And we don't want them to have to go to a lot and swap cars every day within reason. So I could understand two vehicles because you might have two, you know, working homeowners that might do that. Beyond that, I, I think you start getting into a lot of problems. And I think that I would like to see more of that done by special permit. I. For similar reasons, I'm having trouble with the allowing commercial vehicle parking under Article Four, Section Nine. The mobile home. Section. You know, I can understand having a trailer or a mobile home allowed in the backyard because the movement of that. Trailer or mobile home is a little less frequent, but if you have someone who's driving to work every day, which I think is sort of the spirit of this. Allowed use. I think that becomes a little bit more troublesome and I would. Either like to limit that via special permit or not allow it at all. And so that's sort of where my thinking is. I think one other change that I started to notice between the two definitions is. The old definition provide for four wheels. We now. Limited commercial vehicles to four wheels. Now it's limited to two axles. I'd like a little more information on that. I mean, I know, and I know there's some trucks that are pickup trucks that have. Six wheels that don't look too much different and probably don't cause any trouble, but at the same time, limiting it to four wheels would. Probably eliminate a lot of like the sort of dump truck type vehicle problems that we see. So I don't know if that's a way to address it or to have a. Some sort of carve out for things that raise some of the concerns that we heard about today. So I just wanted to offer those comments for discussion.
Okay, that's, that's great. It's guidance. We need.
Yeah, pretty much what PJ just said, I, I'm, I'm pretty much in line with him. He's absolutely right. Except for the last part, but I, I don't have a heartburn with the six wheels. I mean, you know, all these are like.
Yeah.
Pete saying, I mean, they're, they're almost identical to a truck with just a little bit of a. Pete saying, I mean, they're they're almost identical to a truck with just a little bit of a wider A little wider hip, if you will. Um, so I don't have a problem with that. I would uh, like or consider going up to the fifteen thousand instead of the ten thousand as far as lot size, because there was a significant jump in percentages. I think that wouldn't be a bad idea. Um, you know, one vehicle at fifteen, two vehicles at thirty and cap it there, except for a special permit like Peter was saying.
Okay.
I guess I have concerns limiting it too much because the thing about fam- you know, we talked about families who may have three, three giant pickup trucks because it's kind of like part of their work, part of their business, and making it onerous, like they're constantly having to apply for special. All these people having to come in for special permits, or we're going to get a ton of special permits. If that's a little bit of a number. Um, I like that Bruce had said, talking about capping at three and then doing a special permit after that. Um, again, I don't want to make it onerous for people to have these vehicles and put a burden on them. Like, you know, the fifteen, you're right, there there's a large percentage there. So maybe adjusting those numbers, I think, yeah, I'd like to see a special permit after three. I like the idea you had set up on special permit over a certain size. They got to come to us for that. Just to make sure we're protecting everybody.
I have a special needs
Yeah.
Situation that we were talking about.
Yep. And I guess I just got questions about the screening. I thought we were, we we talked about things having to be screened. And if it's put in the backyard, would screening still be necessary? Is that written in?
Uh, it would, as it stands now, no. And the only thing I want to point out with respect to backyard is that if somebody's got a detached garage, then the garage is inherent, technically, they're they'll be on a driveway because the driveway extends. So the garage is at the back. And so inherently, it's behind the longest rear wall of the home in that instance. So in those instances where it's the driveway and that's the garage, then I we can just remove that portion. So if somebody whose garage is attached to the house or adjacent to, isn't parking in the backyard on the lawn. But if it's a detached garage that's set back, which you get a lot in Farmington Center and Unionville Center, that's inherently going to happen. From a location, I'll stand.
Okay.
Enforcement concerns have have come up a lot tonight. It's not something that has been talked about, you know, before uh, very often. And uh, it seems clearly to be a particular issue with this. And uh, Shannon, can you talk a little bit about why why this one might be more difficult from an enforcement perspective? And is there anything that we could do about it? Because I'm not sure that there is.
I'd have to look more into the case that's being that was discussed. I I it's been a while since I've looked at at that. Sometimes it's the claim, so the vehicles get moved off the property, right? So we, hey, bring it into compliance, they get moved off the property, and then it's brought back. Or it was one vehicle for the homeowner, and then one vehicle from a a a tenant or a guest house individual. And they are allowed a trailer, so you're allowed a trailer. But if it's not a commercial plate, right, if it wasn't a commercial plate and it wasn't tipping in it or a combination plate, then again, we start to get limited as to what we can can do um, with respect to that. I'd have to look at the particular instance on some of these. One of the instances that's being discussed tonight, there had been a agreement arranged that apparently has disintegrated. So so I had been involved with conversations with both parties and agreement had been reached. And we then have embarked on this regulation to try to get some clarity for us for some things. And in the interim, the agreement has disintegrated.
Yes, enforcement is separate.
Is it it ends up being very unique. I've had another one that hasn't showed up in this arena, but a gentleman that has uh vehicles on a uh property, it's his grandfather's property, he's staying at his grandfather's and living, living there, but his business is registered in another adjacent community. But he originates and ends his day in Farmington with some of the so he's not operating his business from Farmington, it's operating from the adjacent community, but the vehicle is in Farmington. And I can spend hours with our attorneys on these. At the same time, we have applications to process. So and these are, they're very complicated. And when no one wants to just do the right thing, Mr. Lipinski, I might send him a holiday card. He definitely gets a gold star for the evening. So, right, when no one wants to do the right thing, it it's incredibly challenging. Because you're playing with, it's not like you can say, hey, I got you on the radar gun, you're going a hundred miles an hour. Right? You are now dealing with the nuances of the language of the regulation in trying to get compliance on this and or issue citations. Which is another very long process. And it's, but that's, the citation process is what we have available to us through the Connecticut general statutes. The fines that we're allowed to impose is given to us through the Connecticut general statutes.
Um, Mike, any, any of your input?
I think it's just the difficult part is really, and this is what a lot of people were talking about, is the definition. It what it come boils down to is the definition of a commercial vehicle. You know, like, I forget who brought it up, but you you have these big, I think originally we started talking about this because of the heavy electric SUVs. Were starting to get too heavy. They were there, they were going to be like work truck, commercial vehicle size. But I forget who said about, I don't think anybody in town is worried about their neighbors uh Cadillac or Hummer or 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 their their duly that pulls their, you know, their their RV. They're worried about commercial vehicles. So it's like if, I don't know how we can do it, but if we can more clearly define a commercial vehicle, then we could limit those commercial vehicles better. I I I just don't know exactly how to word it.
Okay, understood.
I mean, does anybody have any ideas on that? It's just you, because we can't aesthetically, we can't do anything, right? Uh, uh, some people like trucks, some people like Jeeps, some people like sports cars, some people like old rusty things. So we can't do anything about that, but but we can maybe more clearly define, not based off of gross vehicle weight rating or or class, but just uh, purpose of the vehicle, shape of the vehicle, the use of the vehicle, I don't know how to do it. But if we can clearly define it a little bit more, and we can simplify it and just say you can have X number of commercial vehicles based on the size of your lot. Um, and and we're not scaring people that might have two sons living at home who both have uh pickup trucks. Not me, but people. Okay, neighbors of mine who I loved and and I had no issue with uh, had three adult sons living with them. The father and all three sons had pickup trucks, and three of them had boats. And um it was fine. They tucked everything back behind their house. None of us in the neighborhood minded. Um, but none of them were driving boom trucks. Uh, none of them were driving moving vans, you know? So I don't know if we can do if we can either do better at at defining commercial vehicles, commercial use, uh, not based on uh GBWR or class, I don't know. That's just my opinion. So I think I've said it two different ways. And if I'm in the minority, then I'm in the minority.
Okay, okay, thanks, Mike. Did did you want to? Come on up.
Again, I'm Arlene Klein. I could be wrong about this, but I think the DMV does a very good job in delineating what's what. An S uh Cadillac Escalade and these large SUVs are personal vehicles. If you look at your driver's license, it's a delineation of whether you're driving a personal vehicle or a commercial vehicle. I think that is a place to start with that.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you. Um, okay. Lots, lots of uh input. Um, processing a lot of it. Uh, I I agree when it comes to the delineation of lot size. I I think I am a little more in favor of going to the fifteen thousand. I am two or three, I I really don't see a reason for going to four, I think four vehicles and above definitely is is special permanent land per territory. I I I appreciate, Mike, you saying that that yes, we we need to simplify it, make it easier, but also it it, will that ma- make it too easy? And will it then become more of a matter of taste? And I I I appreciate standards and having a standard to pin our regulations to. And i- in in terms of legalities and issues of, I I, you know, we get into the old law of unintended consequences, and we say, well, if it's a pickup truck, it's okay. Well, yeah. I I've seen some very large commercial looking pickup trucks with big racks and all that other stuff. And then you get into, well, where does that fit? And I just personal experience, I work in an elementary school. I get a lot of the, but what if, but what if, but what if? And sometimes you just have to say it 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 might just happen, but it probably isn't. And I'm not and I'm also, I also, working in an elementary school, I see that better angels do not always win out. And um, so I I I appreciate your and understand your frustration, people who are battling against this. And I think we are trying to be trying to create the best, we, the best regulation we can that will give us the most ammunition to prevent people who are abusing the law. And and it it's a challenge. And that's why I just have to applaud Shannon and all the uh people in the office for all the amazing work you've done to get us from point A to this point, which I think is as I think as Bruce said, we're we're close, we're close, around the one yard line. To use a football metaphor. I I think we're getting very close. So, um, Shannon, do you get a vi- our vibes on what our directions are?
Sufficiently to take another stab at an edit.
Okay. Please.
So so we're talking about commercial vehicle and definition of it. And I'm in the slideshow on slides three, we've got, you've got a very specific definition of what we're calling it, a commercial vehicle.
There you go.
There you go. So any vehicle or equipment regularly used, carry, deliver, handle, or move goods in the conduct of business, commerce, profession, trade, or recreation exceeds EFHWA Class Two vehicle that exceeds that weight has has more than two axles or has commercial license plate. And then we've also added on to that in terms of what you could have on your property. You can only have a ten foot of cargo and eight foot height. And that counts as one commercial vehicle on your property. And we're allowing up to three depending on the size of it.
What we're looking at, yeah.
I guess I'm I'm wondering what more clarity we would need.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
That's a good point. I'm
If if I could interject about just that, that definition of a commercial vehicle, any vehicle, equipment regularly used to carry, deliver, handle, or move goods in the conduct of business, commerce, profession, trade, or recreation, which pretty much it's any vehicle. Right? Any vehicle, uh, which is above a Class Two or above the ten thousand pounds. That that's that's the only thing that I'm looking at is in the future, the whole reason we started doing this is because there's a bunch of vehicles that are heavier than that that are coming out, that are for personal use. So they're they're being defined as commercial vehicles when they're really just pickup trucks and big SUVs. So that's why I wanted to clearly define, like, what what is a commercial vehicle? A dump truck, a boom truck, a a a panel van. Um, you know, and I'm not saying everything that I'm saying is a commercial vehicle, but whether or not they're Class Two, Class Three, fif- fourteen hundred, fourteen thousand pounds, ten thousand pounds. The definition of a commercial vehicle, I guess, I I to me just needs to be a little bit not more inclusive, like, we don't want to upset everybody, and we don't want to put a whole bunch of commercial vehicles on people's property. Right? But we also don't want to exclude a family that has three pickup trucks. Again, I don't have that family, so I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything for myself here. I'm just, I I know there are families because they are very popular now. Where mom drives a a Suburban and and dad's got a thirty five hundred, and then the son wants one too. And they're all parked in the driveway. So I think having a clearer definition of commercial vehicle would solve pretty much everybody's problem. Everybody who wrote a letter, I think that would solve their problems.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I I I know where Mike's going with it, and and I I I understand. Just for clarification, I I'm what no, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Arlene, what Arlene just said, a- and and mind you, this is coming from a retired police officer that had to enforce the laws. The DMV got it wrong. So I don't want to see us going with the DMV definition. Um, I will give you a perfect example. Anyone with an F three fifty towed a Bobcat now needs a CBL, Commercial Driver's License. You hop in the wheel of a twenty-six foot RV or a thirty foot RV, you're driving it with a regular driver's license. You don't need a CBL. Which one's a little more rough and hard to drive? You know what I mean? So I I don't want to see us following the DMV's oops, because that's two big mistakes on that part. And and again, this is coming from somebody that had to enforce it, and I and they got it wrong. I don't want to see us go down that path.
We tried looking at it, our idea of DMV things, and it's because we tried to figure out we we went from it as to try to figure out what required a commercial plate and what required a combination plate, and it's
It goes by weight, basically, is what it goes by.
But then it goes back to general statutes, and it's buried in a very large section of the general statutes.
And I've had my CBL for years, and it frustrates me every time I see it because there's certain things that I can't do without my CBL that little Mr. Jones is going to do, no problem, no questions asked. You know, um, so I, again, I don't want to see us going down that path.
Understood, understood. Okay. So are we
So we need a motion, a second to continue unless there's other
Eddie, I was just gonna say, last call for any other comments, questions, okay?
And Shannon's going up.
And Sha- I think Shannon's got filled a few notepads over there. Okay, so can I have a uh motion and a second to continue the hearing till our December meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, application for text amendments with regulation for zoning, Article One, Section Nine, definitions, Article Two, Section One, residential eighty, forty, thirty zones, R eighty, R forty, or thirty. A permitted uses, Article Four, Section Eight, Off-Street Parking Standards, Section Eight A, parking on residential properties, commercial vehicle park parking, and associated text edits to Section Eight B and Section Thirteen. Public hearing to be continued to December eighth twenty twenty five. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Abstentions. Okay, so we will continue the discussion in December. So, okay. So.
Back to the first.
Oh, yes, let's see if our.
I don't think anybody's called in.
Okay.
Um, has anyone called in regarding sixty-five Spring Lane? Um, we can either continue it or I can present, it's a sign application. It's not overly complicated. If there's a question that I can't answer, then the matter can be continued to December. But if there's no objection, I'm happy to. It's a, it's attached sign. So
Okay.
Sixty-five Spring Lane, it's northeast riggers, it's towards the south end of Spring Lane, almost near the, uh, Plainville Town Line. They are proposing to install an attached sign on the wall, uh, be facing Spring Lane. It does meet the dimensional requirements.
Okay.
Um, it will be non-illuminated. Um, what else did I have in here? I think it was pretty basic. It's, uh, fifty square feet, non-illuminated. And then the application on the door is one point six five square feet. So this is, uh, the larger sign, the fifty square foot sign over there, street number facing Spring Lane. And then this is on the door. I believe the door is right here. So it, it's faced at, uh, ninety degrees to the wall. When you look at it um, here in Plainview. So the big wall sign will be here and then there's an entrance into the building. So it complies with the regulations, like I said, non-illuminated. So if there's, if there's questions, I can answer them. It does have to go to building permit, so it'll come through once again for building permit.
It does. Okay. Okay, Peter, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Bobby?
No questions.
Dave?
No questions.
No questions.
And Mike? Oh, Mike's still, we lose Mike.
I'm sorry, no questions. I was muted.
No problem. And, um, no, as long as it's not illuminated, I'm fine with it. Okay. So, um, do I have a motion and a second, please?
There's nothing in the planner's report?
No, this is the Cumberland. We're back to the first one.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to handle it in ministry. We, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yeah. So the first one, new business, so it's the new applicant didn't call in. So it's the first item. It was the new business item, not the planners. I understand the confusion, uh, Mr. Polsky, I apologize. So the planner's report item is a sign. This is the actual, because this is a new sign in a new location, it's a full application under new business. So this is the sixty-five Spring Lane, the very first item where the applicant didn't call in.
Yeah, number one.
So we're moving to approve?
Uh, approve it. Yes, sir.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed new one twenty by sixty wall sign and vinyl door sign for MEI, Industrial Solutions of sixty-five Spring Lane, CR Zone for the Cumberland Permit Strategy.
Second.
All in favor? I. All opposed? And abstentions?
Okay.
Okay. Motion passes.
And then there is one, I've got a quick for planner's report. See. The, um, Bollywood restaurant in, on Mill Street in, uh, Unionville is, uh, rebranding, new owners, and they are changing the signs. So it's going to be Aura, Essence of India. Uh, this is, in this case, it's existing monument sign and existing awning signs being replaced in kind. I did run this through because it's in Unionville. It's in the Unionville Center Zone. I ran it through, um, the chair of the ADRC. He agreed, there's nothing. The awnings are, there's currently black awnings with, uh, Bollywood Dreams. Bollywood Dreams is going to come off, Aura, Essence of India is going to go on. Their vinyl applications. Um, so because of that, actually, there's not even a building permit because it's just a vinyl overlay that gets placed on these. So.
Didn't they just change theirs?
Excuse me?
Wasn't it already changed the Bollywood from something else?
Yes, it had been no, not Na- Neo, Na- New, New, New. Something, I can't remember.
No, no beer. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so this is the third.
Okay.
It's the third iteration. Yes. So there's no objections. We're going to let that flow. Okay, perfect. That's all I needed. Uh, I don't have any other, um, planner's report items for you this evening.
Any questions? Anyone want to dig something up for Shannon to look at?
I do, but I'm not going to put it on her tonight.
Not tonight. Shannon's had a busy night.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, um, approve the minutes of the October twenty-seventh meeting. Can I give a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, right. You have to abstain. Okay, uh, all in favor?
I.
All opposed? All absten- abstentions?
I am.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much and we shall adjourn.